First up, approval of the agenda.
I'd approve the agenda.
Then moved in second and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we have anybody signed in to speak tonight? Blake, anybody online? Okay, we are going to skip over hearing of visitors. Next up is student representative reports. Samantha, you're up first.
Well, hello, everybody. I'm glad to be back. I'm sorry I missed the past two board meetings. I was out of town for about a month. And I just got back last week and I'm very happy to be back. But as for school, small sports have started up and have gone really well and everyone is ready to just get started. Um, so I'm sure you guys are aware that Link Crew's funding was cut. But I discussed with our leadership and ASB advisor about maybe ASB and leadership taking over freshman orientation. So hopefully those plans are in the works and freshman orientation will still happen even without Link Crew.
Adding on to the ASB side of things, ASB is getting together soon to make posters for our first assembly for each of the like student sections. And the high school back to school night is on the 25th at five to seven. And the middle school and elementary schools are around them too.
Thank you. Any questions for Samantha, Esri or Olivia? Ready to get back to school? No comment? Well, thank you very much. Moving on to action items, Central Washington Joint Cooperative Fresh Fresh Procedure Products Contract? Okay, that's why it looked funny. How are you? Doing well?
Alright, so um, I belong or I don't belong. Our food service department belongs to the Central Washington Directors Association. And its directors from Prosser all the way up to Ellensburg were a group. And Magellan, that is the director for West Valley, she did all the legwork for our bid for fresh produce. And our bid for our milk. Going together as a whole group, we get better pricing for our produce and for our milk. So this is the final bid. That um, we would like to be approved so we can get great prices for our produce and for our milk.
How does this compare to what we spent last year on?
It's around the same amount or pretty close to it. We actually um, use this very same company, which is Spokane Produce and Spring Brook Farms for our supplies last year.
What, the savings comes in, we didn't see a huge price increase.
Yes, we, I can have a price increase.
But it's not as big as if we had plotted individually, I guess.
Yeah, our buy was to buy the milk from US Foods, which would be like thirty-two cents per carton compared to, I believe, this is twenty-nine cents per carton.
You've been happy with the quality?
Yeah, they do a very great job.
Funny thing, I did have a couple of students say with all these budget costs, does that mean our lunches are gonna be grosser?
We're working the best we can.
Need questions for Darlene?
I would make a motion to uh, approve the Central Washington Joint Cooperative Fresh Produce Contract. Twenty-five, twenty-six?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Central Washington Joint Cooperative Fresh Produce Contract. Products contract, students? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Darlene.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You get the next one too, it looks like. Uh, next up is the Central Washington Joint Cooperative Milk and Dairy Products Contract.
So see, I got ahead of myself. I was thinking they were two together, but it's the very same thing. It's our co-op that we belong to. Magellan from West Valley did all the legwork for us on getting our required three bids, on advertising. Our Spring Brook Farms will be awarded the contract again this year, like they were last year or three years ago, excuse me. Yes, we are. Once in a while, we do have a few milks that are bad. The students bring them to us. I have to take a little picture of the numbers on top and send them to Charlie with Spring Brook. And they're always really good at giving us credit. So for the most part, yes, we're very happy with them.
I'll move to approve the Central Washington Joint Cooperative Milk and Dairy Products Contract.
I'd second it.
Been moved and seconded to approve the Central Washington Joint Cooperative Milk and Dairy Products Contract. Students? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, darling. Appreciate it. Uh, next up is the Central Washington University Internship Program.
So this is actually Darlene also. I'm here to support her. Um, but we had for the first time really, I think ever, a request from Central Washington University to host um, one of their dietetic students here to do an internship in our food services program. So you wanna talk about that a little bit, darling? She will hopefully be coming in November into December. She will shadow our department and learn what it's like to work in the food service department. Um, I feel that we could probably learn just as much from her as what she will from us. She does, uh, she's also to kind of do a project. So if there's one of their like celebrations or things that's upcoming, kind of get some new blood on that. And then she could uh, work on a project, which is also kind of exciting and bring some new ideas and things to the program, so. It was our first time try. I don't know what that was.
Been moved and seconded to approve the Central Washington University Internship Program. Students? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank, thank you. Are you done? Are you done now? Thanks for coming. I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Uh, next up is the frontline recruiting and hiring time and attendance.
So we're probably all going to tag team. Uh, the team from frontline, Megan, you're on. And do you have another team member with you?
I do. My director, Stephanie Fairman. Hey, everyone.
Good evening.
So we're gonna tag team. They're here to answer questions. Um, we felt it was there. So I don't even know where to begin. Darlene, Delise and I. I mean, I know who you are. Deanna. Um, so let's talk about this working smarter, not harder, checks and balances, um, different pieces. So I'm gonna start at the beginning. Art, our um, absence management, what we've been talking about in our budget session and what we've talked about. So I'm gonna be gone. I go in frontline and I say vacation and I'm gonna be gone, right? You know I'm gone. It comes out of my vacation or my sick, whatever it be. That portion of frontline, we have a cooperative agreement and we pay a portion and it's part of our ESD. Right? Frontline has many, many pieces that are, it's way bigger than that. One of which is timekeeping. So let's think from every concept that you can imagine. The old slide the paper under the thing and do a punch clock, right? Taps the thing, it punches your time. But someone still manually had to calculate the amount of hours that you worked or time or whatever and your break and they punch in and out. Well, think of that in a, in a modernized system. You've maybe seen it at the drive-through McDonald's or you've seen other things. You walk in, you key in one, two, three, four, you're at work. You go out, one, two, three, four, you're gone, right? You come back. Then the piece about time and attendance um, is this, it then would communicate. So I'm gonna just pretend, well, we do have a lot of people do this, but I'll give you an example. They come in at five and thirty in the morning and they drive bus. They go, they drive bus. And then they come back and they finish their bus route and then they go work in a kitchen. And then they are done with their kitchen and they go run an afternoon route and they get done with their afternoon run. And then they drive a route for athletic team. All of those have different budget codes. Every one of those time sheets gets touched by people. Not only the employee who has to calculate it and do whatever, but also their administrative assistant secretary and then our payroll person. And that's all has to be data entry. If you've ever worked in data entry, the more you touch it, the more it times errors for error and the time it takes to calculate. In the world of L and I now, we pay to the minute. Not the quarter hour, to the minute. So you have to have this little, I literally call it a cheat sheet. One minute is point zero whatever and two minutes, right? So that, because it has to go into a mathematical equation, so on the silver, right? So we have a proposal that's um, time and attendance. But here's the next piece. If we, we also, if you've seen our recruiting and hiring. So we say we need teacher X, bus driver Y, whatever it may be. We post a job. The person goes in and they spend all this time filling out an application. They're done. We, but before that ever happens, we send it off to the principals and whoever the director is, get the job description done. Tons and tons of time going back and forth. Then you're hired, you've got your name in there, you've done whatever and um, now somebody has to go in and now input you into Skyward. So we're gonna type your name again, your address, your social security number and all the information you've spent all the time putting in. We gotta touch it again. Our dream and goal with the frontline in doing the whole scheme is that we don't, we you're in one time and it's downloaded per se, uploaded into Skyward for the payroll side of things. But your time sheet, everything they work on the backside. Sean is here. She sat through some of these. Uh, Delise, Deanna and Megan, if there's something special that you wanna talk about, but Deanna, what did you gain from our meetings?
We clearly are like in the nineteenth century, maybe the eighteenth. Um, with our practices, we've stayed with, we have so much paper that we're doing and there's so much room for error. And a lack of our, our opportunity to hold people accountable because we don't see it till after it's done. This is like live. So we wanted to check on someone to see if they're doing, someone that maybe has done a lot of overtime, we would be able to just go in and look. And see if today they had overtime or yesterday they had overtime. We are processing this many time sheets um, a month. Delise made reference at our last meeting to do spending three days on bus driver time sheets alone. And not only are all the codes different for those jobs, athletics one, for the athletics trip is one code, the regular bus trip is a code, the pay, the um, food service is a code. Those are also different pay rates. Um, so that for anybody that's done payroll, I actually did payroll before I was a educator, but it was straight payroll. Like there's pay rates. There's, you make this much money, they take out this, this many taxes, social security, all that. And it was, you know, I did it on a computer, but you were figuring everything pretty much by hand or using a chart. This is nothing like that. We have thousands of code combinations and people earning different pay rates for doing different things. Or sometimes for doing almost the same thing. So um, it's just the way schools are. So we have to get to a place, we are struggling, our employees are struggling. We are struggling, we have to, there is a cost of doing business and this has a cost, obviously, one that Delise is accounted for in the budget. But we have to do something different. We are dying on the vine and we have, don't have enough help to do everything we're doing. So we have to be more efficient and this is the only way. I mean, something like this is the only way.
Self-spirited today.
Is there other districts that, obviously there is other districts using it that have proven this?
Yes, lots.
And save us a lot of money? I mean, or is it just management tool?
Overtime. Mistakes.
So if you did get into an issue where you didn't wanna pay overtime, I mean, this would be better documentation of?
Yes, but I'm gonna just pick on the person who's totaling the transportation time sheets. It's, and I did like Delise said, I bet you payroll, it's one bus driver's time sheet who works like I kinda shared. A time sheet for a month for one person, meaning all of their time sheets, right, for the whole month, probably takes me two hours. Because, because to the minute, right? There's not a, a very good mathematical equation to go from a sixty-minute clock to a dec- decimal system. Does that make sense? So you have to look at that. And we do have computers that give us that, but I'm just saying it's very difficult. It's very time consuming. And then the pay codes, so that we are charging athletics, or so that we are charging food service. And if the driver's route was something for special education, is it getting charged to the right pay code? Is it for the, the trip that has funding for grant funding? That's where the, that's where the issues are. And the multiple pay codes because uh, drive rate is a certain amount, a standby rate is a certain amount, an athletic trip, if you go past midnight, it's a different rate, right? So that should all be able to be managed by a computer system.
And if you talk about the recruiting and hiring piece, so right now, we have a teacher, um, say a, a elementary teacher job, we might have sixty applicants. Some of those applications are twenty to forty pages long. We print those, then they go in a big like accordion folder with Jody Saban. She has to go through all sixty of them, write also on paper. Send those, like do her interviews, do a bunch of other stuff on paper, send all that paper back. And uh, I mean, it's, it's that alone, like we don't wanna buy paper. This system, all of that, that review and the choosing people for interviews and, and um, employ, you know, having our um, people look at them to choose appropriate candidates can all be done on.
The other piece, I'm gonna use something really simple. We have, we hired Jaime Martinez who was our lead mechanic, right? So now we have to post a job for lead mechanic. So it goes like this. Uh, Aurelia, will you please send, and this is an email, Aurelia, will you please send the lead mechanic job posting to Jaime for approval? Well, we have to find it because it was nine years ago when we posted it. So we have to go find somebody's file who has the file from nine years ago. And now we need, we have new, like an old job application, right? We have new rates of pay and we have, well, that's all kept there. So when you update who your title nine coordinator is, it has to be on every application. We don't have to go in and type every, the format and the items are there. And then we have a check and balance. Um, if you've worked in an organization where person one approves, you prove the box and it automatically gets sent to the next person. Right now, we're doing that by email and by paper and through inter-district envelope that has to go from you to you to you to you before, to get the signatures. Versus signing electronically and approving what's going on. And Delise has to have them last because that has the budget.
What it comes down to is time. And um, so time entering in the data or time analyzing the data? And um, where do we want employees to operate in? What do we want them to operate in? The entering of time or the analyzing of time? So when we talked about budget this last time, this would be allow the least to see in real time sub-costs, the extra time, the extra days, the overtime, and then you're able to catch those things earlier.
So for me, it's really, really easy to see the cost benefit for the time and attendance piece of frontline. I think just the time saved in processing and accuracy, right, catching those mistakes. I easily see how that pays off quickly. It's a little harder for me to see the recruiting and hiring piece. I know paper is cumbersome and we shouldn't be doing everything in paper files, but I, I also feel like there's a lot of free tools if we're using technology and the resources available to us that could solve some of those problems too at no cost.
At the same time, we are looking into that. Uh, Sean brought up a, a great point that our Skyward system has and uh, a recruiting piece in, within Skyward. Um, where a job board would be where you would go and apply and then um, we would just take all that information from the job board over to the payroll side. We don't know what the cost of that is yet. Um, and then if it's going to be integrated as easily when we move to Q, which is um, the new Skyward basically. So all districts in Washington State will have to move to Q eventually. We're not slated to go until twenty twenty-eight. But we wanna make sure that whatever we decide for HR recruiting can be transferred over to, to the Q side.
And we can, we most likely cannot use a free service because we have records retention laws we have to meet when it comes to. So we would have to have something when we have the records, the access to the records and Sean maybe could help with that, but I, I don't think if we use like Indeed or something like that, we would have.
They don't have to be printed, right? They can be digital records.
They, they can be, but the retention is, I actually think the final people we hire has to be printed, but by law, but.
Yes, we have record retention laws, but we also, when you enter into an agreement with those free services, you're not always bound by the privacy that we have to have when we have social security numbers and birthdays and names out there. When you pay for a service, you have a contractual agreement with that. And then they keep that, those records are kept safe. So both things really would put us into a paid service.
Just thinking of Jody with her giant binder and printing paper and like, that doesn't have to happen that way, right? Is that required though? I mean, do you have to print them all? That's what I'm wondering. Like all this paper, is that?
In the system we have, yes. In the system we have it, but that's really kind of our option. So we do need a different system.
So the, the current system that we have, it doesn't retain the information like Skyward or this would. So right now, every time somebody applies, we are printing off even to just review them, right? We, we get twenty applicants, it's a good twenty-five pages per application because of all their attachments, their job history, um, reference checks, all of that. And so instead of being able to look, have it digitally, we have everything in paper. So like when somebody applies for a job, we have to print all of them, keep all of them. And then when we hire somebody, we have to keep a folder with the, with the application in it and then all of our questions also. So it could be scanned and kept once you've done the work, but we, you could potentially download. I'd have to show you. You could potentially download each applicant's application in a PDF. And then send that PDF to the people for review. That, that is, that is possible. I hear what you're saying. But there's no way for you to see it and take your notes. We don't have a check to who's first, who's second, who's third, who's fourth in the, in the hiring.
And any information.
We do not, we do not own a license to DocuSign.
Any of the information that we collect during a, during an interview has to be kept for records retention. So any of the chicken scratch that gets wrote on the, on the notes, because the system we have doesn't allow us to maintain notes from records requests and, or uh, notes from reference checks and notes from the interviews and all of that, there's not a place to put it. So we would still be handwriting and then scanning that document and there's no way for it to be electronic.
And then frontline, you would put in your notes.
This, this you would have a feature to be able to put your notes in as part of the evaluation.
Wouldn't need to print things anymore.
Take notes online and, and do that. And then that file is saved. There's a, and, and there's a gosh, I just drew a total blank. A reference check form that you fill out and then you date it, date and timestamp my signature per se. Just like similar to a DocuSign, right? When you date.
And, and then it routes, I mean, then it's right back to HR versus Jody. Either putting it district mail or in the summer hopping in a car, driving it over and hoping the right person's there.
So cost, um, you have some different proposals in front of you. It is a discount for doing more than one. Um, I don't know what else to.
I have a question on the uh, time and attendance. Is it like an app system? And it's like where the employees would have an app that they would get used on their phones to clock in, clock out?
So we would have.
Or is it a central?
It would be a ti- a central time clock. So um, it's really a laptop. They would have a laptop. They would go in, they would clock in and they would clock out. Um, ideally, we would have, you know, several devices, but it's just not something that we can afford. It's something that they offer, but not something that we can afford. We have devices already that, that laptops that are not being used, um, that they can go in and, and clock in and clock out.
So I guess my question, you know, we're talking about devices and put them at every building, every possible situation to have people clock in and clock out. Wouldn't it not, not just be easier for them to pull up an app on their phone and?
In, in theory, yes. However, um, if you are familiar with school districts, our, our specific departments for specifically our transportation department, they're not the most technologically savvy. Um, literally at all. We have a hard time even getting them to use their email. Um, and so it's trying to make it as easy as possible for them and, and also for us.
And so, yes, phones are an option, right?
Yeah, so I mean.
Yeah.
The, the only issue, I mean, we've, we've had uh, with the whole time clock thing with the, the mobile app is people clocking in when they're not actually on the job site. Um, so the, the way we're set up is actually, you know, your digit code, fingerprint. So I mean, that, that's, yeah, the downfall with anything mobile with guys.
Well, I know that.
I, I'm from frontline. I can talk a little bit about that if you'd like. Uh, I don't know if you guys can hear me.
Yeah, okay.
So uh, we actually, with our mobile app, we do what's called IP blocking. So um, it essentially requires that if you are clocking in on the mobile app, you are required to be on the district wifi. Um, and then what it also does is it tags the geolocation of exactly where you are clocking in from. So you can't, you know, be at Starbucks or down the street at the grocery store clocking in. So I hope that's helpful.
I have a question though. What about when, what about the bus driver that's on a trip in Seattle and they're done for the night?
Yes. Great question. So we have the ability to bypass the IP blocking. So if you have a certain amount of employees, like for example, those bus drivers who are on, you know, field trips who are not gonna be able to be on the district wifi, you can set uh, those specific group of employees to have that setting where they can bypass the IP blocking. It's still gonna pull the geolocation on the backend, uh, but they could, you could set that up in the system.
Do these time sheets then get like submitted on a regular, like by week? Submitted on a regular, like by weekly frequency and a supervisor reviews and approves that that's accurate and the codes are accurate. Like, is there some checking of the time sheet?
Can you go to like slide? So there is a beautiful slide deck that I think Megan made for us, but can you go to like slide 18? And that's kind of hard to see, but if you look at the slide, you can see like, you can see all of your employees that you would be reviewing. Whether they've got everything submitted, whether they're pending, what, and if they have had any overtime, if they're under overtime. That's kind of what it looks like.
So out of, you know, curiosity. You know, when they, they use this system, does the. I guess what are the steps, I guess for approval or I guess, yeah, I don't know what I'm, how I'm going to try to say this, but. You know, if you have an employee clock in and clock out and it's geo reference to whatever their location is. I'm assuming you can set, it's like a two-part question now. I thought of my other point, but you can actually, if they can't get on the wifi. Is there a way to put like, what do they call it? Like a geo fence around their place of employment? So like. Instead of having to be on the wifi. You know, you could just say, let's say building secretary or something at the high school that they could, they can only clock in within the, the realm of the high school. Grounds. That's my first question. No?
I'm happy to answer. We, at frontline, we don't geo fence because essentially what somebody could do is get on a VPN and spoof their location. So the IP blocking. Is a safer bet, meaning again, they need to be on the district wifi in order to clock in. But like I said earlier, the. You can change the settings for different subsets of employees, like those bus drivers that take those field trips to essentially bypass that.
And, and my next question is part of, you know, say your weekly approval. Is the employee required to approve their time card? Or I guess maybe during payroll. The employee as well as their direct supervisor required to approve their payroll before the system will allow it to push through.
I didn't know if somebody was going to jump in. Yes. So. I'm saying I'm done for the week or the month and I ask for approval and then it goes to my boss.
Okay.
So you, I mean, I'm, I'm all for the time and attendance thing. But at some point in time on, on these. Time clocks, you still have to have supervisors checking now this during the week rather than. Frank submits his on Friday and he's got 50 hours. I mean, it goes back to the conversation we had at the last board meeting. It is. Accountability for supervisors.
Absolutely. Right now. You know, we can put check and balances in place, right? I, I don't want to say every Friday, but at a set time you have to approve last week's or every two days, right? Or whenever we decide as a check and balance system. Or we can, I'm sure, I don't know, my frontline team that's on, I'm sure you can say. An email notification when somebody does outside their contract time. Right? When they've clocked something out of, out of. I mean, there's just lots of pieces. We don't even know everything that it can do for us at this point. But I mean, you've seen those alerts, right? You get them from your bank. You've just done the something. So somebody put in for overtime. I'm sure there's type of alert or something.
Yeah. So in the system, it'll actually. And again, every district does a little bit different, but our best practice and recommendation for school districts is that. They submit their timesheets essentially weekly because. Then finance is able to know and budget out how much overtime they're going to spend, you know, each payroll period. Because essentially right now, if you're doing it by paper, you're not able to calculate that in advance. So if you look on the screen, you'll see. If it'll show in red or green, like where they're at in. In terms of how many hours they're essentially scheduled to work for that specific job.
But I guess it's a follow-up, but it will, you can set up an alert system. So if somebody does do overtime and they're not supposed to, it'll kick up an alert to the supervisor?
Yeah, I think it sends it in the application itself. And then I believe there are. There's an ability to send an email as well to the supervisor. I know for sure it sends it once they submit the timesheet. But obviously from there, the supervisor could deny that timesheet as well.
Gotcha. But if, if the guy's clocked in, you have to pay him. So I guess what I'm saying is we need like an alert to go out before, before that individual were. Frank were to hit 40, 41 hours. I guess how, how are we going to catch this better in 25, 26?
Well, I think first of all, it's weekly versus, so right now you work. The month of August, your paycheck does, or your, excuse me, your pace, timesheet does not go to payroll till the 5th of September. So, so, so right? So right now we've cut from 30 days to seven days. That's one. Two, if we do that, we have different, when you've been directed no to overtime without approval. Then we have disciplinary measures or whatever because of that, right? Right now. It's, it's so post fact, right? We still have those things in place and we're working on doing that, but it's so post that. Post timeframe. So far down the road. And it's hard then with all that paper to figure out who did overtime and who didn't without literally going through each piece of paper. Not that we're aware of, and we've talked with both of the main union presidents and that those, this system is used by other. Pieces. The only one that has an overtime clause in it is ESPP. Is that correct?
SPP union says that they can work five hours of overtime per week without. Both of them don't. Because most of them are, are staff in our office and they know the situation that we're in. But it is, it's in their contract that they can work up to five hours. And I don't know when that was negotiated, but it was long before. Long before us.
Are there school districts that we know that are using this? Like, we got some conversation with them and.
I can speak up. Yep. Toppinish School District. Am I saying that correctly, you all? Perfect. Is using both our time and attendance and recruiting and hiring.
I think. Well, I guess times change, but yes, there are quite a few in Eastern Washington and I could probably easily get your list, but. I know that there are some, but because I don't know them year after year, I can't speak that they still are using.
Well, you kind of look, you know, I mean, I think we all agree that this is probably a. Piece of technology that's needed. You know, if you look at the time and attendance is. 10,000, $11,000 by itself. You might as well do both for 1,800. Versus, you know, you're still going to save 6,000. So next year. Whatever we lose Skyward, build that route or whatever year that is that, that we cancel it and we got to find another one. Now we're paying another. Fee to add, whether it's this or something else. Thoughts? I agree.
So Megan, remember I told you somebody was going to ask, what's our out clause? Yep, absolutely. So in our order form, there's a master services agreement. And the term and termination is outlined in section eight. I do not want to speak out of term. And I don't, I also don't want to read this whole section to you, but you can refer to that in section eight of our MSA. I didn't hear that. I'm sorry. Uh, I believe, and Stephanie, you can hop in on this. I believe it's 60 days.
I didn't hear the question. I'm sorry.
How much, how many days notice do they need to give in order to terminate? The contract.
I actually think it's 30. Honestly, I don't know off the top of my head, but we can get that answer. It's either 30 or 60. It should be in the master services agreement. I can look.
We needed to get our information.
Yeah.
No issue. And we're going to go to something else. You own our information. How do we retrieve that?
I'm so sorry. It's hard to hear. I can only hear bits and pieces. You said you, go ahead.
If we timely terminate the contract, how do we retrieve our information? Is that proprietary to us or does your company then own it? If we want to get it back and we terminate in a timely manner?
Great question. You guys own the data. So you're able to get that back.
What's the requirement for you returning it to the district?
You guys just submit, upon termination, you submit a request to us and we hand all that data over.
What's the timeline for you giving it back to the district? Is there a requirement for that? You'll return it within 14 days, 30 days?
No, we've, we've had districts that have terminated like five years ago and they asked for the data today and we still give it to them. If they, if they ask for it.
So I think that's a different, a different question. So if we were to terminate today. We have our agreement, it was timely terminated. How fast can you give the information, us access to that information?
That's a great question. I would say, I don't know off the top of my head, to be honest, the exact. Timeline on the returning of data, but I know that we're dedicated to do the, the, the right thing for the school districts.
And is, can we get that language in the contract? So if we timely terminate it, that we would have access to our information within seven business days?
Yeah, we can work with our legal team to add that into the master services agreement.
Or whatever administrative.
Yeah, absolutely. If, if you guys just send that over and we'll work with the legal team to get that added. As an addendum to the MSA.
I've not seen any of this language in what's in our board packet. Is there another document?
Is there? Yeah, I'm looking at what was sent over and you, of the order form and you said page eight. Can you help us a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely. So on the, oh, good. I'm off mute. Okay. So on the order form. On the, I'm scrolling down, that would be the fourth page. There's a link and it's, it's frontlineeducation.com/masterservicesagreement. And that's on page four of the order form. So you have to click the link in order to access the MSA.
Oh, thank you.
No problem. I know it's a lot. And then in the MSA, there's section eight, term and termination, which outlines. Thanks, Stephanie, for putting that in the chat.
For my board, if you look at 8.4, it talks termination for lack of funding. There's a clause in there for eight. And that one's 30 days.
Have we gone to visit any schools that are currently using it?
Like I have used it in past places. Other than the time. We've used the attendance piece and recruiting and hiring, but I've not seen the time feature, the key in piece in action.
And I don't think there's any question that we have to modernize and be more efficient. Have we? Do we want to look at any other options to see what else is out there?
We, we have looked at other options. We looked at a software last year specifically for transportation. For time clocks. And Sean can attest to this. It was insanely expensive. It did not work with our equipment. We, we chose frontline because we already use frontline for our, our ASOFT and our, our subs and our, our time off. And so it would just seamlessly.
I have the worst pregnancy brain.
The, the day, the absence data automatically reconciles on the timesheets. So let's just say I clock in Monday, I clock in Tuesday. But I don't clock in Wednesday. Well, I need to put in an absence, right? If I'm not there. And so that, that absence right now. Right now they're having to, you know, look at absence management. And then look at a paper timesheet to make sure the person didn't put in time. But what will happen with time and attendance is that absence from absence management automatically reconciles on the timesheet. So the two systems are interconnected. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you there. I, I know what you were trying to say. So I was trying to help.
Thank you so much. The brain frog is real. That will help a lot with our, our transportation department, in, in every department really. Especially when it comes to calculating overtime. So if they're not there on a, on a Wednesday, that's eight hours. They're not going to get paid time and a half for the extra two hours they worked on Friday with the straight time. So that would help a lot with, with the timesheet piece. And the amount of time that it takes for them to look at ASOFT. Check all of the times, look at the timesheet and then also for subs. And so the sub piece is, is a huge piece on that because the coding is incorrect, the schedules are incorrect. And this piece would help mitigate that and clean up that, all of that data. Our calendars aren't correct, locations, there's a lot of different things.
Good question. In the, whatever the contract language, can you clarify the. No termination for convenience?
It's 8.3.
Thank you. I was just going to ask. Client is not entitled to terminate this agreement for any other reason. Those contained in this agreement, no termination for convenience is permitted. I could reach out. I'm more than happy to reach out to our legal team. I truly do not want to talk out of term. It is not my realm. And so I'm happy to reach out to our legal team for additional information unless Stephanie, you have something to add.
I think it's basically just saying that, and again, this is my interpretation of what this means is that. Basically the, the district's not just going to say, hey, you know, we just don't want this anymore. There's got to be like a reason, but I will say like. We only work with K-12 school districts. Like that's why we're called frontline education. So like. We're, our, our team's very understanding, you know, if, if things happen like. In a district where budget constraints happen, I know that's in the MSA, but like. We're very willing and, and happy to work with districts. Like we understand. You know, what districts are facing every single day because that's the only people we work with.
Thank you.
I would suggest or move that we table it to our next meeting and continue, as I think this is software that's. Going to work with what we already have, just to maybe get some answers to the outstanding questions and make sure that it's going, it's going to work and we're. Going to be the best option for us.
Can I clarify the two things? We're talking about the termination piece. And what happens to the data? How fast the data turns around?
And what happens to the data, how fast the data turns around, those are my two things so far. So to my, the frontline people on, those will be our questions, a table means they're not denying, they're not doing anything, table means it just sits back on the agenda, and we answer the questions and then they make a decision.
Understood, thank you Kim.
Wondering if, is, is this time sensitive, I know it's going to take, what, three or four months to implement? It's going to take a while anyway, so. Want to make a motion to table the frontline recruiting and hiring time and attendance contract to the August twenty seventh meeting?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to table the frontline recruiting and hiring time and attendance contract to the twenty seventh. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. I do appreciate you both getting on and spending some time with us. And if you'll get these questions answered, we'll bring it back here in a couple weeks, so thank you.
Thank you, and we'll get you those answers, and if anything else comes up, like, let us know, we, we're happy to answer, and we want you guys to feel comfortable, and we're, we'll do anything we can to help, so, we appreciate it.
Thank you all, we appreciate your time.
Thank you, thank you, have a great evening.
You guys too.
Moving on to the Happy SLP LLC contract for speech-language pathology services.
So we are short one, speech and language pathologists, we've had the job posted for several months, we have had no qualified applicants. This person actually worked for us last year, and has had a business for a really long time, so she is, we, she has worked with Dr. Allen to provide us with a contract. And this actually, even though it's really not preferred that we have a contractor, because we have a speech para that works with the middle school and high school kids, so this person has to supervise that person and help with the lesson, providing all of that, a para can't do that on their own. It actually ends up costing us about a third of what the person would actually cost us, so there is a cost savings, even though it's not ideal, but it will work, she's a, she was a great employee last year, and she'll do a great job, she already has, has a working relationship with the para, so same person that supervised her last year.
And it's virtual?
She would be, but the actual services are with the para in person. She supervising the parent and helping planning the lessons, the para delivers them.
Versus the.
Yeah, she's not, it's not virtual for the kids, she's a supervisor virtually, but the, the lessons come from the para in person.
Okay, thank you. I would make a motion to approve Happy SLP LLC contract for speech-language pathology services.
Been moved and seconded to approve the Happy SLP LLC contract for speech-language pathology services, any further discussion? Hearing none, students? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to vouchers and payroll. Any questions for?
Lot of attachments to what happens. I move to approve vouchers and payroll.
I'll second it. Been moved and seconded to approve vouchers and payroll. Students? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Next up is Resolution twelve twenty-five approving the sale of a parcel of surplus district real, real property and authorizing the superintendent to sign all documents necessary to effectuate and complete the sale of said property.
So, we have been keeping abreast of the sale of what we can call the white church property, and that's the, the resolution says you're giving, empowering me to sign on behalf of the district.
I'll go to approve Resolution twelve twenty-five approving the sale of a parcel of surplus district real property and authorizing the superintendent to sign all documents necessary to effectuate and complete the sale of said property.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution twelve twenty-five, this will be a roll call vote. Michelle?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
My two will vote aye, motion carries. Next up is the second reading of Policy thirty-two forty-six, student and telecommunication devices or the cell phone policy.
So, in front of you, it's a little bit different than what we see a lot of time in second reading, we've done some research. So, there was a, when we met with our administrators, there seemed to be in sec, in letter A, there was a little bit of difference between middle school and elementary school, and it just, they, we just felt it wasn't quite right, so we did some adjustments there, so you can see those. The, on school grounds versus during the school day, it is possible that a student could potentially be there at four o'clock, and we don't want a violation of using a cellphone at four o'clock, so that was during the school day, the whole point of this whole policy is to increase engagement during the lesson. So we did that, and then we felt the reason, we don't understand, or did not understand why the word or school staff was on the elementary one, it really is an administrator's decision. So that's that piece. And then letter G, did some work with WSSDA, or what we formerly call WASDA, which is the governing body. I did some research as requested, and basically in a nutshell, when you bring something to school, we're private property and we could technically look at it. But, it's a very fine line, what is private, what's not, and that is not our intent. And with looking, talking with legal counsel and WASDA, while other districts have left G, and we as a team are proposing to you that we would take that out, and, and if we needed something, then it would be a family discussion or which is not normally done on the second reading. I mean, we don't make a change in the second reading.
Questions on the updated policy?
I have gotten feedback that parents have concerns with G, so I think she'll be pleased to see it removed.
Students, what do you think? Think it's good?
I, I do you understand why we're removing G, and do you see, I mean, do you under, do you support the removal of G? I mean, I know, I'd really like to hear your thoughts on it just a little bit.
Well, I think you were right earlier about how there is that line of what is personal, what is private to that student, and I think that at the end of the day, that is our property, and, you know, like you said, we're on private property, like, when we are on the school grounds, and so I do understand why you would want to search her any electronics or anything, but in those cases, you do have to talk to the parent eventually, and so I think it would be wise to just have that as a family discussion, as you said.
Yeah, I think to add on to that, I was wondering if like, if there was something on the phone that would like be evidence that maybe a kid's in danger, like, maybe kids are talking about a fight, and they're like, oh, well, so-and-so texts so-and-so that they're going to fight here. Would the, like, staff be allowed to look at the phone for that? Or would they have to talk to the family first?
That was the intent of G, that we could look at it. And I think in good business and SI as a parent, right? I'm going to say almost every parent I would ever talk to would want to help support stopping that, so I can't imagine that they wouldn't let us, but I don't think we would want to do it without parent permission.
So, they're still like, they're striking G. But there's still, sounds like some procedure that needs to be developed to address what he's not going to anymore.
Right, so we are working on the procedure, Deanna and I have been working on it. But we didn't really, it sounds kind of funny, but we couldn't really write the procedure till we decided if we were going to have G or not. So we will have to work on that. Does that make sense? But we couldn't, I started, yeah, I started writing it, and then we're like, well, going through all this work, if we're it won't, it'll be pretty simple, because what we're trying to do, everybody who's listening, or might listen to it later, we're talking about improving the quality of engagement in the lesson. We're not trying to get into someone's face. We're trying to get the phones put away and engage with the teacher and the lessons, really isn't about the private space, and the other thing is, is protecting others. If there is a scuffle, a fight, or something, we don't want it recorded, we don't want it passed on, we don't want it shared on, that's why we're trying to put them away.
Parent doesn't comply with their student's phone being searched, what's the next step?
I'm going to be honest, I don't know, because.
Their phone just be confiscated during school, like, they have to turn it into the office?
That's what we're having to work on the procedure for.
That's a really great question, because we're going to have to get through that. We don't want to tug a war over a phone.
We also know it's going to take a little bit of time, and then after a while, it will not be a big deal anymore.
Well, there's still more work to be done, but we, we need to make a motion on this, as it is. I would make a motion to approve the second reading of Policy twenty-three forty-six, students and telecommunication devices, cell phone policy.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the second final reading of Policy thirty-two four, thirty-two forty-six, as student and telecommunication devices, students? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Moving on to item nine, emergency certificates.
Well, here we are again. Each year, we do have, actually with the emergency certificates, there's three there. But Evan Swerengen just got, received her regular teaching certificate in the last two days, but it's a, not a special ed certificate, so I'm going to have to bring her back as an out-of-endorsement. She still has an emergency certificate, so if you approve it like this, it really doesn't matter. But she will come back again now as an out-of-endorsement, because she got her elementary ed certificate, and she's in a, a program to get her special ed personal. Our principals have struggled a little bit with finding, we've had several special ed teachers to hire, and actually Jackie and Eric are both employees that were pair educators that are in education programs working on their special ed endorsements, so there's kind of your grow, grow your own again, so we're excited to have them aboard.
I'd make a motion to approve the emergency certificates. Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the emergency certificates, students? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Moving on to item ten, conditional certificates.
I also have Jacob Patch received his regular art teaching certificate today. So he does still have a conditional certificate, so he don't really need to do anything to it, but he technically won't be under a conditional certificate this year. And the other folks listed are either working on, they're working on finishing a program, tests, and I know Kayson's real close, he, he was almost done, and I think there was maybe a baby that threw the hitch and get up or something, so he'll be done soon, Cooper's a little bit behind him, but they have to get their CTE certification, which takes some extra time.
I'm going to make a motion to approve conditional certificates.
Been moved and seconded to approve the conditional certificates, students? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next up is the MSL consulting agreement.
So I'm going to be honest, I struggled a little bit with bringing this one. It is Chris Clem, who's been an excellent support for our three building principals using their OSSI funds, they, they received a grant to get some, you know, for their improvement work, but Chris was actually provided free of charge, it was like a service. We've seen a lot of growth and improvement, and all three principals that worked with her really felt they benefited from her guidance, support, and honestly, quite direct, she's very direct about some of the changes and the things that they need to do. And so they really wanted to continue to work with her. And at the same time, KRV and the high school also have improvement to make, but they did not benefit from any of those funds, well, OSSI was discontinued. So they, the principals asked for a way to keep her, because of how helpful they thought she had been with the work, but I know we are in that time of budget cuts. The reality is though, this Title II is for teacher and principal improvement, professional development, and T-PAP, which is another grant that we applied for, also supports this work, so it would be no basic ed funding, and she would be able to work, it's actually very, I know it looks expensive, but a very generous contract, considering the cost of consulting fees, and Chris would come and work with each of our principals individually throughout the school year, in addition to the work that Kevin and I will be doing with them. Oh yeah, no subs required. No subs.
That's going to be kind of our buzz, what's pot of money, and are there any subs? That's going to be the buzz for the year. Yeah.
There's been three things over my career that have had a major impact on me, one was a SIP TAP, which was School Improvement with Technical Assistance Program, that was the name, we worked with an ESD, our school, small little school, on school improvement using implementation science, and had changed that building sport-wise. The second was working with Ruth Parker, who's an expert with math, and I got a grant to work with them for five or six years. And last year. She has certificates in implementation science and improvement science. Systematic way of looking at and approach to make sure things are working, using data.
We have limited funds for professional development this year, Title II is one of those, and there's a few others that we can leverage, but this will be the preference, the professional development, we can offer the principals, there's no travel, there's no, you know, they're, they're not out of the building, she comes and works with them in their building on-site. And we do have the funding to pay for it through our grant, and that's the purpose of these, of these programs.
I'll make a motion to approve the MSL consulting agreement.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded to approve the MSL consulting agreement, students? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Next up is the first reading of Policy thirty-one twenty-two, excused and unexcused absences.
Talk about difficult. So you can see the policy, you can see the WASDA policy, then the red line is almost impossible to read, and then, you know, the draft, right? The, the piece that I'm asking you, I think Deanna would have some input on this. I don't know if there's, right below, if you go to the draft policy, I don't know if we need synchronous and asynchronous inside this policy anymore. It's there, I don't know if it's better to leave it in case something was to happen, we'd already have a policy, does that make sense? I don't know if it's needed anymore. I think the
I'm, I'm going to say, so this policy is here because of Ms. Olivia. Who brought this up during the student. Who brought this up during the student handbook conversation. And um I went and pulled the old policy and and Selena got the the model policy. They're the same year, like it was. This was a a period two thousand seventeen. The all, and I believe at the time that line was changed because in the policy. The actual policy, there is not, there should, there's no penalty if a student cannot make up a participation class. There's, there's really um three choices. There's, they get, they they somehow can do the activity that was missed. They can do an alternate activity that can make up for that. Can't be a penalty, can't be only get eighty percent, can't be only get half, whatever. Or they're excused. That's it. So there's no penalty for missing a participation class on an excused absence and you have to be able to be allowed to make that up. So that's the really the major change.
I feel like that's very pragmatic. An excused absence, you you should, you shouldn't be docked with a participation. Olivia, thank you for raising that issue.
There are questions on the policy, students and senior unit?
Um I would just like to say thank you, Olivia, because I have been personally impacted from the, you know, eighty per- or you can only get up to eighty percent. For an excused absence, and so I think this will really benefit a lot of students.
I move to approve the first reading of policy three-one-two-two.
A second?
Been moved in second to approve the first reading of policy three-one-two-two, students? All those in favor signify by saying aye? Motion carries. Uh next up is University of Washington and the High School twenty-five twenty-six local agreement.
So this just allows us to provide our college and the high school courses, their science courses that we have through the University of Washington. Um taught at the high school by uh Miss Mrs Lacy Martin. Uh these contracts don't cost us any anything, but they provide for the. The grading and all the things that have to take place and then each of the teachers gets kind of an honorary and per student for the grading and the work. Um that that is paid to us and then we pass it straight through the teachers. So Central, Eastern and University of Washington, I'll. I'll pay, pay the teachers and they pay us and then we pay the teachers for the extra work for their college or high school courses.
Are there new University of Washington courses are picking up or are they just for the ones for box?
So, so the the right now, we're, we don't have all of the courses offered all of the time, but we. Are between forty and fifty college and the high school opportunities at the high school, depending on whether it's, it could be through C T E. Uh could be, like I said, Eastern, Central, um University of Washington courses. At this time, we haven't, uh we have not added any new courses in a couple of years. Uh we, working with the high school schedule, C T E does add frequently as they've expanded some of their uh programs, but I don't know, I don't know. Maybe there were two courses this year that got added. Uh but we're a little bit at capacity right now. We need to um kind of rebuild that enrollment. They're really working to rebuild enrollment in the course, in core science that that dropped down uh in past years and that's coming back up. Um and so to get that where kids have that interest and that need for those courses or want for those courses, so. Um just give us some time.
But personally, I think it's great that we offer all the best to our students. I know when I was looking at, you know, courses of my incoming freshman, it was like, is there anything on that list you wanna grab? Because, you know, take advantage and I think it's wonderful to.
Yeah, there's a young lady that I know that she is an avid student. She's very motivated, uh very good student. She's, she told me she's gonna be a senior. She's gonna graduate with fifty-six college credit.
Yeah, I mean, no one can afford to take like. Full load anymore, right? It early, great.
Questions or comments for Deanna?
But I um I'll move to approve the University of Washington and the High School twenty-two five, twenty-two six local agreement.
Been moved in segment to approve the University of Washington and the High School number twenty-five twenty-six, a local agreement, students? All those in favor signify by saying aye? Motion carries. Includes our action items tonight, moving on to consent items one through three.
Make the motion to approve the consent items? Second?
Been moved in second age to approve the consent items, students? All those in favor signify by saying aye? Motion carry. Moving on to reports, Mr. Gilman, you're up first.
Uh so we, I know that uh they're gonna talk about the admin retreat a little bit, but I just wanted to say. Working on our school improvement plans and seeing what every building is working on and trying to streamline those. So that everybody's kind of working on the same thing and those evidence-based practices was really neat to see. Um, we're also going into a book study, which I shared with the board, I think in December, Building to Impact. Which is also about the implementation science, so it correlates really well with what Chris, the work Chris will be doing with us. Um I was able to do some uh math P D with elementary Monday and Tuesday. Around math workshop and rich tasks, discourse, questioning, all that. Um and we had some panorama P D today, which is the program that you guys approved in the spring. Which pulls all of our data into one spot. And um hopefully we can present some profiles of what's that, what that looks like. Being able to pull up a kid and see all the interventions that they're in. That's social emotional interventions, that's gonna be academic interventions all in one place, so. We truly have a better understanding of our kids in real time.
Thanks, Kevin. Any questions for Kevin, students? All right, Lisa, you're up again.
Talked quite a bit tonight. I'm, I don't have anything else.
I thought she was gonna say that. Um, yeah, we did have P D today, panorama. We have Brett, our new certified staff tomorrow for best mentor and our. Um we're doing required pair educator training. Our pair educators have to get in fourteen uh clock hours per year. We have that tomorrow for half of pairs and. Next week for the other half, the E S D is providing us a training called Youth Mental Health First Aid. That we've had before and for certified staffs of this opportunity for pairs and then um. So just a heads up, as you know, we're trying to move forward with this high school science adoption. Um I was able, I'm at the point now where we, based on what we need. I mean, we still have to go through the process as goes the district construction materials committee and that's all not gonna happen until school starts. I don't have those people right now and then it'll have to be open public review for two weeks and then the recommendation would come to the board. Uh with our grant, we would be able to adopt and have licenses and all of that for every three year, for three years. Plus some discounts I was able to get. It costs us thirty-eight hundred dollars.
That's excellent.
And that's with some little closets of books for each of the teachers, so for kids that don't have the online access at home, so. That's.
What have we put in the budget? I mean, was it like? Three hundred and something?
Four hundred and fifty thousand. Now, this is three years. We could go out and do more years, but um I think three years is sufficient. And it also is, doesn't commit us to a really long term in case there is something different that we might like, might come along. I, and the the teachers are quite patient. Like I said, they've waited for twenty years, so it's fine. Uh if they wait a a few more weeks, so anyway, um that's it for me.
And see, any questions for Deanna?
Yeah.
Okay, um we've been here a long time. Uh you you did the um resolution, so we can sign for the white church that property. I will sign for that on September fifth. So that's that parcel B, which is what we're calling it. It's the Park Avenue, the raw land. We will be able to review offers on Monday, the eighteenth. With our hope, then I would bring forward an offer and then we would go through that whole process again with approximately a thirty day closing. So sometime in. Early October, hopefully we'll be done with that. We have not had a lot of serious interest in the grants avenue property, but we had a lot of people looking, so we just gotta find the right one. Um budget, you know, we've done that. That's kind of what Julie said, we talked this through. Um, do have to let you know, we did have one legal public records request. I'm, we're fulfilling that now and we have new one. One new case that we're working on through special education. Um and I'll keep you abreast of that. Facilities um publicly sharing that due to budget constraints, we will not be attempting any work towards neighborhood schools at this time. Um that doesn't mean it's gone forever, but we just have to get things right before we can move forward. I would, do wanna thank you to the maintenance crews for helping us get ready for school. Um things are getting there and we're, we're getting this and the list longer and I have to say Blake said this, I don't know if he's really listening. This is the first time in how many years, Blake? Five? That we have not moved to school, moved an office, had to move technology, right? Because you had the one building and then the other building, right? And so, and last year we moved this office, right? So like this is the first time he says, he's actually maybe. Gonna have most of the technology ready without having to put out fires because something's not hooked up, right? So I wanna give Blake credit for bringing that up. Um. This is also kind of a. Uh I said it, sort of, sort of a bad optics. We had applied for a twenty-five to twenty-seven L, early learning facilities, public school district grant. And we were awarded it. One point one million dollars to refinish the classrooms for the E cap, which is our three-year-old preschool. In the back, I call it the back corner, but it's technically the southwest corner of the Boys and Girls Club. Um Deanna and I are committed. We are not gonna sign off or do this, not for one dollar out of basic ed, right? So we're gonna do a lot of work. Um the first work. I think it's kind of ironic also that the federal government and the state government want me to spend all these hours, two weeks to finish a report that's due on Friday. The week before school starts, like, do they not get what superintendents are doing right now? But I, I will get worried. But we want the community to understand. Um we've said it a thousand times, there's different pots of money. And if we don't take advantage of this money and take care of things for our young ones. Then we're gonna lose this grant and who knows how long it'll be to again. So we can't take this money and put it in a different pot. It's specifically earmarked for something. Um. We are happy Deanna did her emergency and conditional and so forth. We are fully staffed for teachers and pair professionals. We are still looking for an athletic trainer um and they're interviewing on Friday for a special services secretary translator, so I think that'll be taken care of. Welcome back letters are out. I may, our new transportation director is working on the bus routes. Um. Uh, we're looking for, we're looking at routes a little bit differently. If you have family that um attend Island of Angels or some of our larger daycares, we're looking at a way to. Decrease some of the really crammed full buses and some of the things that are working on also. Expediting and dividing, we might end up having three buses physically stop at the Boys and Girls Club. Um so that we can have even numbers of students dropping off and stopped less shuttle, like where you have to get off one bus and onto another. Um, I'm gonna be on vacation this Friday, heading to Montana, meet my Wyoming family halfway. Rotary meetings are still going on, Chamber of Commerce events. I'm just sharing with you, I could be at an event almost every night, every weekend. Um, oh, and to National Night Out people, I'm just gonna be honest. I just plain old forgot to go cut the tops off of the ice, uh popsicles. That's, that was my duty this year. And about halfway, it was about seven thirty and I saw somebody post on Facebook, thank you for a great national night out. And I had to text everybody like, because I was plain old for fun. And um red and white nights coming up, September twentieth.
Thank you, Kim. Any questions for Kim? Appreciate it. Uh, next up is board reports, Michelle?
I don't have anything, just looking forward to school starting in thirteen days. Not that I'm counting down. You haven't registered your children yet, do so.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, just uh hoping students and staff all had a great summer and recharge, ready to go. Always a exciting time of year to start up fall sports. And uh we'll just be praying for a safe, productive uh school year for our district.
Brian?
Yeah, I just wanna say thanks for all the hard work on the budget because I know you're. You're uh doing what you need to do and it's not, this isn't fun. You know, a lot of families and businesses are feeling it right now, just with the, the economics, the way they are and this increased prices of everything. It's uh, it's hard for anyone to make a living, just, I see it in our business too, it's just really tight. But uh, you know, I, I always try to look at it like it is an opportunity for us to. To try to be thankful for what we do have and look at the good things, so.
Lisa?
I think we had a lot of, a lot of rough news, so I'll try, I'll try to leave us something nice. I'm gonna, I'm gonna drop a big hint too. That Beetlejuice Junior or Kids, whatever variation, is this weekend at the Princess. Lots of talented crosser middle school and high school kids. I think Jody will be there. She has very good attendance at these events. She's one of the only crosser school district employees that I always see. These kids would love to see their teachers, their principals, and anybody there cheering them on. Um they, I got a little preview and it was a lot of fun and I think you would really enjoy it. Um if you can figure out uh what Beetlejuice is about, I don't, I don't, can't, I've watched it a lot of times. I don't understand it. But there's some great singing and dancing. It's, you would enjoy that and good snacks.
That's great, thanks, Lisa. Um, you know, I don't have anything, you know, it just, you know, a lot of work, you know, preparing for the next year and. Um it goes fast. It seems like we have a long summer break, but it's really a blink of an eye. Uh before, you know, once you're out and then you're back in it again, so um thank you for everything and. You guys do, doing great work, so let's, let's keep it up. Um, so next future meetings, we have a study session next week at five P M right here. Uh August twentieth and then uh regular board meeting on the twenty-seventh at six P M. Uh which would include the budget approval at that point, so with that, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you.